Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 13th, 2023 Town Council Meeting. I would ask at this time that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask at this time, we take a moment of silence to reflect on all that's happening. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, I have to announce that this meeting is being audio and video recorded by LCAT, and I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording. If so, please state your name. Okay, hearing none. Seeing none, we're going to move right on. Public comments. Junie, did anyone sign up for public comment?
No.
Okay. Council comments.
Connor. Thank you, Ralph. I just have three quick ones. The first one is, I just wanted to say thank you to Mike Kane, since he's departing the council after the most recent election, but then also congratulate those that won in our most recent town election from last week, so Marilyn.
Thank you.
Then the last thing was to say that I, as part of the election, of course, we had the affirmation on question one that would allow us to continue moving forward with the municipal light plant, which would potentially allow us to do a fiber-to-the-home project. And as part of that, the Mass Broadband Institute today had a summit at Union Station in Worcester that I participated in.
Great.
So it was an interesting experience, but all in all, it seems like it's a state and federal focus at this point, too, so hopefully we can move forward with that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay. I would suggest at this time that we jump ahead. We have Senator Olivera here. Would someone like to make a motion that we take 7A out of order?
Sure. I move that we go out of order and move to item 7A and then return to our regular agenda order.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Senator Olivera, please come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking me out of order. We do have to run pretty quickly. Rachel's Table, which is a great community organization that provides food to a lot of the shelters here in Western Mass, is celebrating their 30th anniversary up at the Log Cabin in Holyoke, so we're going to run up there. Also like to introduce the woman behind the camera, Jennifer Pickering. Jennifer is my district director. She does office hours here at the Senior Center in each one of the 12 communities. Jennifer is no stranger to this district. She worked for Senator Lesser prior, and I'm so thankful and happy that she decided to stay on again with my office, and we do have a great team of people that reflect the district.
So you didn't wear the boutonniere for us?
Well, I was getting married today, but I got stood up at the altar. No, it was actually Portuguese Heritage Day today at the State House, and it's a really exciting day. It's the first Portuguese American to represent Western Massachusetts in the legislature. We actually gave out an award to an individual who's part of Polish National Credit Union and a friend of mine from Ludlow. They had a great ceremony at the State House, but the red carnation is very significant in Portugal because about in 19, in the mid 1970s, there was a basically a bloodless revolution where soldiers put carnations in their barrels of their guns to symbolize the overthrow of a bit of a dictatorial rule of a person named Salazar in the mid 1970s. And since then, they've restored democracy, and they're one of the strongest partners of the United States, NATO and the European Union. So we had the great ability to celebrate today, which is exciting to have, and I'm so pleased to be here tonight. Congratulations again, Marilyn, on a hard-fought election, and congratulations to the new town councillor that's coming on board. And at the conclusion of the Q and A that I'd like to have, I have a little gift for Mary that we want to present on behalf of the legislature and in recognition of your service at East Long Meadow. But I'm embarrassed to say that this is the last of my 12 community visits, and I apologize for having to reschedule so many times. The calendar fills up pretty quickly, but I have the honor of representing this newly-formed state senate district that includes 12 communities. The previous district only had nine, and so it was expanded through redistricting by losing sections of Chicopee and Springfield. We picked up three new communities. So this new Hampden-Hamshire-Worcester district includes South Hadley, Granby, Belcher Town, my hometown of Ludlow, Palmer, Warren, which is my only Worcester County town, Wobberham, Hampden, East Long Meadow, obviously, Long Meadow, and then parts of Chicopee and parts of Springfield. So the parts of Springfield are basically packed into East Forest Park and the Forest Park area, so it's only about an eighth of the city and only about a third of the city of Chicopee. So it's a little bit of a different district than Senator Lesser. Senator Candera, Senator Lee is represented before me, but I'm just so delighted to be here as someone who's spent 16 years in local government, 12 as a school committee member, four as a rep-town meeting member. I really have the span the gamut of different types of governments in my district. You know, East Long Meadow partners with Palmer in having a town council without a town meeting and a professionalized town manager. I have two rep-town meetings, Ludlow and South Hadley, two strong mayor city forms of government, Chicopee and Springfield, and the rest are open-town meeting forms of government, which is definitely something that's very interesting. But as the last stop on my tour of hopefully an annual visit to each one of either the select boards or town councils or city councils in the district, just wanted to provide a very brief overview and really stress the importance of the partnerships that we have. You know, partnering with State Representative Brian Ash and with State Representative Angelo Pupulo, both represent the town of Long Meadow, is something that we pride ourselves in. We complement each other on legislation, but we also complement each other on the supports that we have, whether it's through the budget, whether it's through our advocacy, but we all look at approaching this job through the lens of regional equity for Western Massachusetts. And so I just wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity, and I know that both Marilyn and Connor submitted questions beforehand. Thank you for doing so. Happy to answer any questions that Ralph, Matt, you might have, or Mary, or anybody else in the audience. Looking at, looking at kind of my scope of my work as a member of the legislature, big difference between being a House member and being a member of the Senate is that you automatically chair a committee on the Senate side. And I'm so pleased that I'm actually chairing something that is of interest to local communities, and that's the municipalities and regional government committee. So any home rule petitions that need legislative approval, their first stop is my committee, and I co-chair that with State Representative Carol Fiola from Fall River, and we are in the process of really going through the backlog of home rule petitions that were, didn't cross the finish line last session. And so if there is something that East Long Meadow is looking and needs legislative approval through the home rule petition process, please don't hesitate to reach out to our office right away, and we will do our best to fast-track it and make sure it gets an expedited hearing before our committee as we move forward. I also serve on a few other committees that have some regional impact for Western Massachusetts. I'm currently the vice chair of the Tourism, Arts and Culture Committee, which here in Western Mass, one out of six jobs are tied directly to the creative economy. It is a Western Mass-led committee, the two co-chairs from Amherst and from the Berkshires, so there really is a focus on this region and promoting that sector of our economy. I also have the privilege of being the vice chair of the Public Health Committee on the Senate side, which we are going through and learning over the last three years of what worked and what didn't work as we moved through one of the largest-scale public health crises in the last 100 years. We are looking at many bills right now that have to do with pandemic planning, but also learning from what we did and moving those bills along. Also sit on a couple other committees that are important to local communities, the Consumer Protection Professional Licenseur Committee, which does, we call it the vice committee because it does liquor license processing. So if a community is looking to expand liquor licenses, first stop for those bills is the Committee on Consumer Protection, also regulates and looks at bills having to do with professional licensure. So all the things that require a licensure exam at the state level goes through that committee as well as the state lottery. So it's an interesting committee to be on. Also, financial services. Financial services has a large, wide impact, including on the insurance regulation of the insurance industry here in Massachusetts. So all of those things where nearly the 7,000 bills that are filed each session have to pass through those filters. I filed myself 57 bills this session, which was more than I thought I was going to file, but many of them had to do with public education and support for local communities. Looking at our school districts, which tend to be the largest expense for a local community, some of the largest ticket items of increases that we're seeing right now are in regards to special education costs for added district placements who are anticipating a 14 and a half percent increase in fiscal year '24, which can be crippling to local communities' budgets. And so I filed this session, working with the Superintendent's Association and the School Committees Association, a bill looking that is based and modeled on the Foundation Budget Review Commission that took a look at our Chapter 70 funding formula and made recommendations back. This would do the same for special education and also make recommendations of how the state can better support local communities that deal with these double-digit increases that have a massive strain on municipal budgets each and every year. I also have several bills regarding to, regarding financing, including fully funding, things like regional school transportation and the special ed circuit breaker, which are essential for local communities to balance their books each and every year. I'm proud to say, and I'll get into some of the questions, and I can probably answer them as we're going through, but Marilyn, you asked a question. What are some examples about how you might be lobbying to bring more housing options to Western Massachusetts? I've actually filed a bill this session looking at the expansion and putting in, on the books and in our laws in Massachusetts, the ability to have tiny homes. Tiny homes is another option that many states are experimenting with to allow people who might want to age in place or age on their family's property or age with a loved one, a much more affordable and greener option for them to actually live. And so we are working with the advocates, we're working with Mass Municipal Association as well, that we partner very closely with on this bill to ensure that we are protecting the rights of communities to reasonably regulate them, but also allowing them the ability to have a statewide permitting process so they are not illegal here in Massachusetts. We're also looking at expanding through our tax bill on the Senate side this session to make it more affordable for seniors to stay in their homes. We are doubling on the Senate's proposal, the senior circuit breaker tax credit that's designed to keep seniors in their home and make it much more affordable as they're facing rising costs. We are doubling the rental deduction for those that are renters from, actually increasing it by $1,000 from $3,000 to $4,000. We have a low-income housing tax credit that we put into our Senate package that's funded at $20 million. We are also doing something for the housing development incentive program, which for cities like Springfield and Chicopee is raising the cap for that to allow for more market-based housing within their communities, and also a local option property tax exemption for affordable housing, which is part of the Senate package we'll be actually working on this week. That's, you go ahead, Marilyn.
The market-based option, does that impact housing authority?
It doesn't, so it's giving developers a tax credit to rehabilitate aging facilities. So look at Ludlow, for example, that I'm familiar with, we have the Ludlow Mills. We put in place about 80 units of affordable and market-rate housing just about five or six years ago. We're breaking ground on our clock tower building in order to rehabilitate these old and aging buildings. Developers need to be incentivized in order to go in there, and these things that are called H-DIP incentivize developers to come in and rehash these facilities and put in either market-based or affordable housing to help with the backlog of housing that we see here in Mass, in Western Massachusetts. So those are all part of kind of what we're trying to do to focus in on housing this session.
With Brownstone Gardens, which is senior housing private, we've tried to do some change of units to provide more market. I think we're up to 13, and that's not a lot when you've got a list of 500 people waiting for an apartment kind of thing. So, and these are folks that don't qualify for subsidized housing, so we need some kind of a balance with whatever we offer, and so that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, and so most of our focus with our Senate tax package is focused in on more of a housing lens than even the House or the Governor proposed. Unfortunately, this gets to your question, Connor, about state revenues and revenues increasing. Unfortunately, we saw a dip in April in our tax collections, and so we scaled back our tax, our tax proposal in order to kind of balance it out for our budget going forward. We're proud to say that we have one of the best bond ratings out of any state in the country due to the fact that we've budgeted cautiously over the last decade and have put significant dollars in our rainy day fund, anticipating a point in time when our economy dips that we would tap into that rainy day fund. But we're also doing what we can to give back to our communities, but also invest in our citizens for more affordable. Within the tax package we're taking up later on this week is also changing the estate tax threshold, which is catching a lot of middle-class families right now. There's a threshold of $1 million. If you go a cent above the $1 million in your estate threshold, then a surcharge tax is not just on that one cent, but every dollar below that $1 million is subjected to that. And a lot of middle-class families are now being caught in that fold. So what the Senate proposal does and the House proposal does as well is raise that threshold to $2 million, and then it's every dollar above that $2 million where the surcharge goes in, not on the $2 million below. That's also part of our tax package. We have things to help working families within it as well, including doubling the earned income tax credit, which has the best impact on working-class families. We are also doubling the dependent tax credit and removing the cap on it. So for families that have dependents, it's capped at two children right now. If you have four children, you only get, for those two children, that tax credit. We are eliminating that cap on the number of children and doubling that amount to put more money back into people's pockets as part of this tax package going forward. Some of the other questions that were brought up included the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which I was very, very familiar with as a school committee member that worked on a, a building project towards the tail end of my last couple of years, and clearly looking here at East Long Meadow and the needs that you have in your high school. What we did on the Senate side as part of our budget bill that we passed for FY '24, we put in an additional $100 million into the Massachusetts School Building Authority to help with that backlog of projects that are out there to expedite some of them. That was included as part of the fair share dollars that we received from the surcharge or the millionaire's tax that the voters approved last November. We also put in language within our budget to take a whole-scale look at how the Building Authority is financing projects. Over the last, you know, 35 years, you know, the buying power of the cent on the sales tax that goes to the Building Authority doesn't have the buying power that it did 30 years ago. And so we need to make sure that we look at generated revenue streams in order to support the Building Authority so we can help out communities that receive reimbursements through these projects. You know, Ludlow, which built a, renovated our high school in the late 1990s, I think we received over 65% reimbursement rate in the late 1990s for that project. When we did our project for the new elementary school, it was below 55%. So that sliding scale is going down because there isn't enough revenue that is going into the Building Authority, and so we're trying to stem the tide there with that account and reform and take a whole-scale look through an equity lens of how we can better support our communities through the Building Authority. The Senate is taking a leadership role in that area. When we're looking at our crumbling foundations, that's something that has been a priority of mine, and now former Senator Ann Goby, who left the Senate and represented many of the communities that are impacted by that, I'm pleased to say that the Senate approved additional funding for testing reimbursement programs for communities and for actual families so they can test and see if their house is subjected to this. There's actually an elementary school in the Brookfields that is facing issues with this, which is a, you know, hundreds of millions of dollar issue that's impacting all of our communities. But we also put in place within our budget a new language change that implements a new testing requirement for quarries to prevent the sale of these contaminated concrete that went into these homes to ensure that this doesn't happen again. This is actually mirroring what Connecticut is doing as well on this end. We also are pushing for a fund that homeowners can access in order to help out with, with the challenges of fighting and rehashing their, refurbishing their homes in order to meet that. So those are some of the questions. Did I miss any questions that you might have had?
You didn't miss a question, but I wanted to add a comment to the crumbling foundations. We do have homes in East Long Meadow that are silent. You know, the homeowners are not chasing after testing. They know who, you know, supplied the concrete. They can see some things, but they're, they're afraid, and I can understand that. So I'm not sure the state is able to capture how large this problem really is.
Yeah.
And at some point, you know, testing is one thing, reimbursement. There has to be some sort of program in place to offer assistance with placement of the foundation.
And there are bills that have been filed this session modeling after what Connecticut's doing. I think they've done some, some work with creating a fund for reimbursement for homeowners because the cost of the homeowners can be astronomical at this point for something that they didn't even know about, you know? It wasn't an inspection if they bought their home or when they built their home.
Wasn't the developer's fault.
Oh, it's, no.
It just is.
Exactly. And the last point that I'll make pertaining to kind of municipal finances is Chapter 90. So the lifeblood for, lifeblood for, yeah, the lifeblood. You know, having done 11 of these already, I kind of know what, I can anticipate some of the questions. We took a different approach on the Senate side than the House, and we're now in negotiations. We put in new pots of funds within Chapter 90 to support communities. Obviously, that $200 million threshold and the buying power of that is not what it used to be, you know, even 10 years ago. So we created more pots of funds that communities can access for things like dam repairs, small bridge repair programs, culvert repair programs, and we created a brand-new account that has never been included in Chapter 90 before for less densely populated communities. You know, a lot of my communities in Western Massachusetts, I mean, East Long Meadow's fairly dense, but I have communities like Belcher Town, which is one of the largest communities in, in Massachusetts, where through the formula, because the number of jobs that are in the community, that's factored into the formula, they get kind of short-changed on it. And since we have more roadways here in Western Massachusetts than they do in a lot of Eastern Massachusetts communities, we created a new pot of funds for less densely populated communities to access that, to get more funding in the Chapter 90 program over time, and those other pockets of funds will go to support communities that are out there. One of the big things that I've been advocating for, for Chapter 90, is doing it earlier in the legislative session so we get the money to the communities early on because the, you know, the season for road repairs is very short. You know, if your beginning projects are getting funds later on in the session, later on in the season, you have a much shorter window of actually repairing your roads and bridges. So we are taking a much more comprehensive look at it with some of the fair share funding that's going to be generated this year. We're looking to put more dollars towards Chapter 90 funding in our proposals on both the House and the Senate side. So we are utilizing some of those funds, not just going towards the MBTA in Boston, but utilizing those funds to help out our communities through Chapter 90. So thank you for anticipating the question there and.
So I do have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Is just recently been brought to my attention. I know in Connecticut, they're looking at redoing some of the rail lines and bringing them at least all the way to the Massachusetts line. Have you heard of anything, any interest in bringing the rail back through the town of East Long Meadow? I've recently heard that, that the state, the DOT was looking at possibly bringing the rail line back through the town.
I had, I had not heard that. I had not heard that yet, but you know, rail discussions through the West East Rail Commission that was created through our, our Transportation Bond Bill last summer that we passed in the legislature, will be reporting out later on this month, a plan for the governance of rail outside of the MBTA, which includes our West East Rail and also includes what I've always been advocating for, which is north-south rail connections, you know, through the, what we do with the Valley Flyer that goes from, you know, Vermont through the Valley, Northampton, Greenfield, Springfield, down into Connecticut. How essential it is because our economy is tied much more north-south here in Western Massachusetts than it is east-west right now. You know, my dad and grandfather both worked in Connecticut. They both worked, one worked at, my dad worked at ABV. My grandfather worked at Hamilton Standard, and he did the commute from Ludlow before '91, and it can be pretty taxing for that. So looking at wholesale, comprehensive look at our rail systems here in Western Massachusetts and our connections in a multi-state compact, whether it's with Connecticut or Rhode Island or New York, is essential for us, for the economy of the future. So I have not heard anything personally, but thank you for bringing it to my attention. We'll do a little research in there.
Rail trail, it's a parking trail.
Oh, no longer.
No, the depot no longer.
Ice cream.
It has ice cream, and I've walked the trail many times. So a lot of rail trails have been, have been put up throughout the valley that are actually connecting, you know, multi-states right now, including through Belcher Town and Palmer.
And the last thing I had is, I think we have a vote that will be coming up or that is being introduced, civil service or police department to remove them from the civil service. I know it didn't make it through the legislative process last year, but that is something, I believe.
Pending.
It's pending. Is it before public service?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it was supposed to be approved by the Civil Service Commission, and then they disbanded and haven't been recommissioned, according to the last information we had from Rep. Pupulo's.
Well, keep us updated on that. We're happy to be helpful with it, especially if you're moving something to remove it that needs legislative approval or through the.
That's now a question, according to the police chief in town. Legal counsel for the Chiefs Association has indicated that that approval's not necessary.
Okay.
But I don't know the basis for that opinion.
All right. Well, keep us updated. We're happy to, you know, he decides what.
We'll do that.
Anything? No, it was great.
Okay.
Coming in. We greatly appreciate you coming to talk to us and update us on everything.
Yeah.
Obviously, I mean, the towns are working separately, the state's working separately, and to know what each is doing is fantastic.
Well, use my office as a resource, you know? Our, our door is always open to you, so if you need anything, don't hesitate to reach out. If there's something happening at the state, don't hesitate to get in contact to our office, and we'll try to get back to you as soon as possible with an answer. So, yeah, well, thanks again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the committee. And I do have a little recognition for, for Mary, an official citation from the state senate, be it known that the Massachusetts senate hereby extends its congratulations to Mary McNally, town manager, East Long Meadow, in recognition of your dedicated and committed service to the town of East Long Meadow on the occasion of your retirement, and be it further known that the Massachusetts senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by our Senate President, by our Clerk, Michael B. Hurley, and by me, your state senator. Congratulations, Mary. You're over here. We'll do a picture. You want to wear my carnation?
I'm Irish, I'm Portuguese.
Try not to get Jean also taking a picture.
That's great.
There you go. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
All about that next.
Oh, congratulations as well on, I just saw that your $45,000 in Community Planning Grant Program was.
Yes, I was going to announce that.
I'm sorry.
That sounds great.
Bye, Jen.
Okay. We're going to move back to the town managers' report. Mary, what do you have for us?
Okay, thank you. I too, like Connor, wanted to congratulate the successful candidates in the respective races, certainly Marilyn Richards. Delighted that you're back.
I mean, go far.
That you didn't leave, let's put it that way. Yes, and to John Torsia as well. We're looking forward to his service on the council. And to school committee members, Greg Thompson and Kathleen Lyons-Liden. I too wish to thank Mike Kane, Elizabeth Marzian Voucher, for their service on the respective committees on which they served. As you know, Mike was president for a couple of years here while I've been here, and I worked with him rather closely, and Kathy Hill before him, and now Mr. Page for the last year, and so it's been my pleasure to work with all three. And town, I want to just say thank you to all three of you in particular, but to Mike since unfortunately he's not here tonight. But we know that these positions take a lot of time and effort and concern and dedication, and all of the people that serve on the council and in the committee certainly, you know, exhibit that community spirit and keep the community a vibrant and energized community in which to live. So. So very happy about the success of the new candidates and the service of those who are leaving us. Um, also happy about the ballot question. Did you read this before you got here? The municipal light plant, um, opportunity obviously presents great potential for the town of East Long Meadow. And I said only half tongue in cheek in my report that I think the passage of that vote, um, will serve to re-energize Don Mackey, not that he needs re-energizing, but and Ryan Quimby, because they're both very, very consumed with the with that particular project, as was Connor and some of the other members of the broadband committee that served in the initial phases of this. So I'm happy for them, and I'm happy for the town. It'll it'll still be a bit of a of an uphill climb to get all the things done that need to be done in order to achieve that goal, but, um, that's a very, very important first step. So congratulations to the community of those who voted in favor. Very grateful for that. I do say in my report that our town clerk is going to provide more detail on the elections later in the meeting. I assume you have a report, Jeanie, on that. But as is par for the course, the election was conducted very smoothly. Unfortunately, the turnout was was meager, I guess we'd say, but, um, understandable. I unfortunately understandable in light of the fact that there were no contested races. As the Senator just indicated, the Budget Conference Committee has begun its, um, budget negotiations. Um, so that budget committee has three members of the Senate, three members of the House, and they will reach a compromise that'll then be presented to the governor for the, uh, as the final budget. And as you all know, that'll be, uh, helpful to us when we establish the ultimate tax rate in the fall. So that's considered considered, uh, a work in progress. And I did forward you the copy of the Mass Municipal Association letter that highlighted many of the same projects that Senator Olivera just mentioned in terms of issues that they're focused on for funding purposes. Uh, on the mundane side, we did finally move planning and building departments onto the first floor and space that was, uh, previously occupied by finance and the assessor's office. Um, the offices are somewhat joined because we cut a window hole in between the adjoining wall. I think it makes for very streamlined service to the public. Every time I've been by there recently, um, I've noticed people leaning over the cutout to talk to somebody in planning, uh, and the counter that was in the assessor's office remains there so that there's plenty of room for people to spread out plans or or drawings that they bring in for review. So that that was a a good move. And I think that, uh, both departments are adjusting happily to their new quarters. And it also allows the DPW to expand upstairs. And so instead of that bullpen area where all the mid-level managers and then the administrative staff were kind of bunched together, um, they've all had an opportunity now to have a little bit of breathing room and space and privacy for the important work that they do. I said in my report that we were expecting Title II 70 Maple Street to be conveyed to the town uh, on June 9th. In fact, it was conveyed on June 8th. So, um, now what remains for the council and the next manager, I suppose, is to determine what best steps, best next step could be for that parcel. Following up on your question, Marilyn, and Senator Olivera's comments, there's a substantial amount of money at the Commonwealth level for housing. And I think I've made my opinion known on that subject, that that's what my preference would be for that parcel. The town needs housing, and, um, I think that would be a great spot for a developer to work something out there. Um, our, again, our Mass Works project, it was part of that community planning grant that the Senator mentioned on his way out. I got the email at quarter of six tonight indicating that the grant was awarded, but it's asking that the news be embargoed until the governor's office makes a formal announcement through the media. So since he's split the beans, I'm going to follow up and say hallelujah. I'm glad we got the money. But, uh, he said it first, not me. Um, I also heard from the police chief today. Uh, he and Lieutenant Manning and Lieutenant Alexander from the East Hampton Department interviewed five internal candidates for the position of police sergeant, um, one day last week. And, uh, Lieutenant Manning and Chief Williams are going to do a second round of interviews with the two of the five that they evaluated. Well, we all sort of put in our opinion after the initial interviews and ranked the candidates informally. But the top two are going to be re-interviewed by the chief and Lieutenant, um, Manning, and then a final decision will be made hopefully next week. All candidates who participated did a very good job in their interviews and exhibited great enthusiasm for the police department, which was very, uh, affirming to the chief and the lieutenant and myself. So we're happy about that. The, um, union labor relations issues all continue unresolved. Fire Department will probably be going, well, they're in mediation. The next date, I don't believe, has been ascertained with certainty yet, but it'll be soon. And the clerical union and the professional division of the, um, UPSY Union, uh, are probably both headed to mediation, too. There's a difficulty in the labor market these days. I mean, the it's all about money, and it usually is for most of us. Um, and I think that that's probably the one of the major stumbling blocks, because, um, we, as a municipality, obviously, we don't have the luxury of of what private industry does with respect to our financial situation. Eastern Hammond County Board of Directors extended a job offer last week to the second candidate that was interviewed. I think I reported on this last month. He too declined the job. Um, we got an email today that he had, uh, been advised that he needed three more years to vest in his current position. And he couldn't afford to leave the current position without, he, I guess, when he interviewed with us, he presumed that he was already vested, so I don't, there was some miscommunication there. So we still search for a veteran service officer. Um, the Recreation Department got some bad news last week in that they were informed by the staff at St. Michael's Parish that the gym that belongs to the church was no longer going to be available for the town's use, for basketball. And according to the director, that they have a very large group of three and four-year-olds that want to take up hoops, and they unfortunately now are going to have some difficulty finding a place for those kids to play. Just I I just threw in the report that this is what, and not that I'm telling you anything you don't know, but this is what prompted the whole heritage park redevelopment issue to try to gain some traction over the last year or 18 months. And it's issues like this that happen, and they have a dramatic, really a dramatic impact on the ability of the rec department to, um, adequately service, in their own words, uh, the population of children in the town that want to participate in sports. Lastly, I did submit for your consideration tonight, three applications for appointments to boards and commissions. Marty Grudgeon, uh, for the Board of Assessors and Tom Solnier on the Housing Authority are seeking a reappointment to their respective positions, and I fully endorse that, uh, request. Marty's term technically, I think, is up, I want to say June 1st. He's anyway serving as a holdover. And the Director of Assessing is concerned that if the council takes its full 45 days to evaluate whether you want to veto my suggestion in his regard, that she has a full agenda for a meeting on June 28th that requires some votes. So I was hopeful that you would consider his appointment, uh, to be re-approved tonight rather than waiting for that time to expire. I personally think that he's still entitled to sit and vote and serve until a replacement is named. So I don't think you really have to do anything, but just want to make you aware that the assessors being ultra careful and, uh, concerned that that she has a a board, because now there's only two members of it.
Right.
The third nomination I'm submitting is for Lucien Jiguer. She met with Diane Bishop and me a week or so ago, and, uh, is recommended by Mr. Grudgeon and Marilyn Godini, and would like very much to participate as the third assessor. So we talked about crumbling foundations and the real estate market and valuation and a lot of things. And I felt comfortable that she had substantive knowledge. She manages one of the largest real estate offices in the community in Western Mass. Um, I think it's Landmark. I think that's the agency she works for. But, um, she was very knowledgeable, and I think she would do a good job. So I am submitting her nomination. And there are some other appointments, reappointments. Mark Beglan to Zoning Board of Appeals, Elizabeth Stoughton to Conservation, and and, um, Tom Behan to Historical, Michael Lupo, Lupo wants to be the new Graves Officer as he's the son-in-law of Dan Nealon, as you probably know. And, um, those appointments don't call for any activity on your part, but I just wanted you to be aware of those thoughts. And the Westcom Board met again last week, Thursday. Yeah, it was Thursday. And, um, there's an ongoing issue with the radio contractor. Uh, it's a company called Horizon that's based in Arizona, and there's been some local complaints by the various members of the district. And the district at Westcom is striving to find a solution to that, and it's an ongoing subject of discussion at our, uh, very frequent board meetings. So that's what's in the report for this week.
Thank you. Questions?
I do have one.
Carolyn.
Mary, um, 70 Maple Street. We're hearing that it's on the list for potential consideration for the courthouse.
Yeah, I heard that, too.
I mean, I thought it was a joke when someone mentioned it, and because we hadn't heard anything about it. Is there a backstory? Is there anything that we've heard? And and do we have any control over whether, you know, we choose to use that land for that purpose?
Well, I don't know what the backstory is. I'm sure there is one. Um, but no one contacted the Town Manager's Office to inquire about that property. So I was as surprised as anyone when I read it. I think even though it was rated number four, um, because of the contamination and the lack of immediately available public transportation to that site, uh, I think it will rapidly fall from its perch at number four. So I really don't know anything about it. I I believe that if the Commonwealth were interested, I also read that they wanted to put a six-story building there, 240,000 square feet. And I think they might have some pushback from various interest groups in town about that level of building.
I just didn't know what control they had. You know, some some things are out of our hands.
Yeah. No, I think if they wanted to build a building there, they'd have to be negotiations with the town since we're now the title donor. I mean, they may have focused on it because it had been essentially abandoned for so long and and dormant, that they maybe thought it was ripe for the taking. Because no one, um, no one asked me any questions about.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Always interesting. Connor.
I don't have a question, but I wonder if based off of, um, Mary's comment about the appointments that she submitted to us, if I should make a motion about that.
That was going to be my next thing. So I'm just trying to figure out how the motion goes, because, um, we have the right to to veto it, but not to approve it. So.
Accept her recommendation.
I was going to, I'll try something.
Yeah.
Waived your right to veto, uh, when, um, on the appointment of Chief Williams a year or two ago. I think that was the verbiage.
And I think that's the verbiage, to waive a right to veto. But give it a shot.
All right, so I move to waive the council's remaining veto period for the appointments as presented in Mary's Town Manager Report.
Second. On the can both, uh, or do you want time on?
Appointments.
Appointments, so on all all.
Great, yes. Good. Thank you.
Discussion. There are none. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. That motion passes four zero, and they are appointed then.
Great, thank you. Diane Bishop would be very happy. Thank you.
Because you just saved me asking.
And I wrote it down, too, as a reminder.
So did I, actually. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. Matt, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the May 23rd, 2023 open session minutes.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on them? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes four zero.
I'd like to thank Jackie for doing a good job. Those were challenging minutes. So thank you very much.
We've already done seven A. Seven B. So I think at this time I will read this, and then I will ask him to come forwards. So this is in regards to, um, our planning board member, George Kingston. George Kingston is a retired chemical engineering research manager and holds a PhD from Clarkson University. He was a United States Air Force captain and has been a resident of East Long Meadow since 1979 and is married to Jean L. Delaney. He served on the Conservation Commission from 1988 to 2014 and has been a planning board member since 2008. George served on the Charter Commission, the Bylaw Revision Committee, and the Community Preservation Committee, and is current member of the Historical Commission. He was also a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee and served three times on the Open Space Committee. George was the East Long Meadow representative to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and is now an alternate Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Commissioner. He is also Vice Chair of its Executive Committee. George is a published author of two books and a master gardener and member of the East Long Meadow Garden Club and American Legion. And at this time, I would ask George to come forwards. Personally, I'd like to thank you for your service, and Marilyn has a proclamation we'd like to.
This is a this is a pleasure. On behalf of the town of East Long Meadow and the town council, I am pleased to read this proclamation. Don't do that. We're going to make me cry. Okay, proclamation. Be it hereby known to all that the town of East Long Meadow offers its sincere appreciation to George Kingston for his 35 years of dedicated service to the town of East Long Meadow as a member of Bylaw Revision Committee, Charter Commission, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Master Plan Steering Committee, Open Space Committee, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Commissioner, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Alternate Commissioner, Planning Board, dated this 13th day, 13th day of June 2023, signed by Ralph E. Page, President of the Council.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Humble by dishonor. It's been fun, fun, most of the time. But I can hope to stay on historical for quite some time to come and to continue to interact with town government where I think I can help. Absolutely.
We're not going to lose your number.
You all know my phone number and my address. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you, George. We have some stuff.
Thank you so much.
We'll be later on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Connor. Just a few items I thought you might like. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, George. Okay, we greatly appreciate your service.
Just got an application for the historical. Not done yet. That's great.
Okay, seven C.
But he's losing it.
Annual election update. Jeanie, do you have an update for us on the election?
I do. Brief. Um, so as you know, there were two uncontested races. Uh, Marilyn won her seat, her to be reelected to the town council, and John Torsch is joining us for three-year terms, town council. And Gregory Thompson, um, reelected for his seat in school committee. Uh, Kate Lyden is joining the school committee for a three-year term. And of course, as we talked about before the ballot question passed, which is good news for the town. We had, um, we opted out of early in-person voting for this election for obvious reasons. It wouldn't have been justifying the cost to do that for this type of election. We did have, um, 46 requested vote-by-mail ballots, and they all were returned. And we had 15 requested for absentee ballots, and 11 were returned. And in in the clerk's office, we're, they're the same things. I hope the state will soon say. they're the same things. I hope the state will soon say they're gonna be, they're the same things, basically. We'll just call them vote-by-mail. Um we don't solicit for vote-by-mail like the state does. The state has sent postcards to all registered voters in the past for vote-by-mail, and so we don't get the the return that we do for state and federal elections. But people get will get used to it. I think people still like to come out to the polls. The big news are the poll pads. Um I did a robocall the night before to remind people about the election, and I I introduced the poll pads to people so they wouldn't be shocked at the electronics on the tables. And um I did put something on the Facebook page for the town introducing the poll pads. So quite a lot of people coming in, voters, say they knew what they were. We had signs up saying you don't have to show ID according to Mass Massachusetts law, but they will, the poll pads do scan the barcode on the driver's license just for name and address purposes. And just to scan the um license, it pops the name up quicker for quicker check-in. There was a learning curve with our check-in people, but I wanted to use these poll pads for this election because I knew it'd be a slower one than normal. I did have thirty-five attend a poll pad training two weeks prior to the election, and the LHS associate representative came out, and she did a great job. She said, I'll stay as long as you need me. Make sure everybody had hands on um training on that. LHS is the same vendor for the voting machines, and they're great support people. We've had good luck with them. Um so we're hoping November will have, you know, we'll be all set with those. I wish we had more. I requested ten. I was grateful enough to have five. But I think when we come to twenty twenty-four with the state and federal elections, it'd be very busy. It'd be nice to have two at each table. I was very grateful to have them for this one. So uh that's about it.
That's all.
Any questions?
Everything, it sounded like everything went very smooth. I stopped in a couple times during the day. The workers are just wonderful.
They were ecstatic. They couldn't
Under control. Everything looked great.
Good. Thank you.
Marilyn, it was nice to see you out front, as usual. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to number eight. We have a public hearing, uh which was scheduled for six fifteen. It is now six fifty-five. Um so I'm gonna ask Attorney Levine to come up. So this is a public hearing to address a proposed zone change for three twelve Parker Street, residents double A to residence A. Um council members present are Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, Matthew Boucher. And I would ask the clerk to read in the legal notice.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on June thirteen, twenty twenty-three at six fifteen PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street for the purpose of addressing a petition for a zone change at three twelve Parker Street, parcel ID seven five dash five dash zero, from residence AA to residence A. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar. Information relating to the pending bylaw amendments is available for public inspection at the Town Hall sixty Center Square. For the council, Jean R. Croglet, a town clerk of the council.
So I would like to say straight out that a zone change would require a two-thirds majority, which is a supermajority on the council. We have three members not present, so we will not be able to vote on it tonight. Um but it is scheduled, so I would like the applicant to um give us a little presentation on what you are looking to have done, and then at that time, I'll open it up for public comment.
Sure. Uh so as you're seeing the application packet, uh three twelve Parker Street is currently in residence double A, which um as was said at the planning board hearing, uh is an obsolete zone that was put in place in order to accommodate uh the sewer changes in the town and has not been in effect. The small, the large lot sizes has not been necessary for quite some time. Um but what the applicant is intending to do here is uh has a lot, three twelve, that is very oddly shaped. It has ninety feet of frontage. It goes back quite a bit. Um it's a lot of acreage there, uh and a lot of unusable space because of how it's laid out. So what the applicant intends to do is take a large part of that rear lot and transfer it to his daughter, who lives on Rollins Drive, right around the corner, uh and at the same time, increase the frontage of three twelve and decrease the frontage a bit on three twenty-two, uh which is just next door, um and which he also owns and bought with the intention of uh being able to accomplish uh some sort of uh transfer of land in order to um give some land to his daughter to and and put in the simplest terms. Um so that that's a the simple view of it, uh and I I think that it it's a benefit to the town, uh whereas there's now one very oddly shaped lot with the ninety feet of frontage going very far back, uh and the zone change and the and our plan, which we put on after uh, which Dr. Nardi intends to apply for, uh would give the town, instead of a ninety-foot frontage, non-conforming, oddly-shaped lot, end up with three conforming lots. Uh the three twelve Parker, the square footage will be cut down quite a bit, but uh it would be within uh residence A guidelines. Um and there's a line that goes, the zoning map goes right next to three twelve, in between three twelve and three twenty-two. So what the intention here is to move the line down uh and carve out this small piece, which is right on the line. Uh so we'd be moving it uh just a bit.
Well, I guess we're in a little bit of a conundrum here.
So I I was intending, I I
And I understand.
I didn't know we'd be, I'd be
And I think what we'll do is reserve council questions and all for the next meeting, but I did want to open it up to the public in case there was someone here that wanted to speak that isn't going to be able to make it um at the following meeting, at least that can have it on record.
If there's any uh preliminary questions, I can help with the council. If there's anything I uh that would like me to look into before the next hearing, I'm happy to take any questions, of course.
So with that, I would open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to come forwards, yes. Would you like to say?
Yes.
So if you would state your name and address for the record.
My name's Christina Bent. I live at three oh six Parker Street, and I've owned my home for thirty-nine years. I've occupied it for that time, and I'm a registered voter. I've been hearing all about this. I was at the last meeting, and I understand what they're trying to do, and it's it's fine um on paper. But the lots we're talking about, my lot is in double A. For whatever reason, God only knows I don't. I'm also a non-conforming lot. I do not have the proper frontage to be in a double A zoning. And them changing the zoning for the house next to me leaves me stranded. I'm there all by myself because the house at three hundred, I mean, there's no possible way to change that because of all the land he owns on Rollins Drive, which is all double A. Um my house is under eight hundred square feet. And I've just recently learned all about, okay, you can't do this, or you can do that in different zonings. And I'm looking for the future for my grandson, hopefully, to take over the house, or God forbid, when my daughter has to liquidate and sell it. I mean, I hate to see them having to go through the expense that is being gone through now to make a zone change or make um make it easier to sell without a bunch of problems. I didn't know I had a non-conforming lot. I always just assumed, okay, I had the acre. I was fine. You know, I had no clue to this. And to, you know, just to leave me stranded there in double A next to one house that definitely can't be changed. If it's gonna happen, which I don't know it is or isn't, I think I should be allowed to change my zoning to be the same as three twelve. That's And that's that's really it. I I just became aware of all these different changes that I had no clue of. I mean, I kind of know the history of my property and the different properties, but I had no idea I had a non-conforming lot.
Oh, I understand that. From being on the planning board, um there's quite a few non-conforming lots in town.
Right, but I'm only concerned with the two that are in question.
If you would.
Okay, Christine, um we've met, Marilyn. I visited the parcel or the location with Christine and another abutter, and it's my fault that she learned that she's pre-existing non-conforming.
No, not really.
We remember you
Yeah, we did, but you know
We talked about it. You didn't
Patrick surveyed, and and that's when it finally came to like a head. Um even Patrick didn't realize that I didn't have the proper front frontage to be a double A lot.
But I I just want to communicate to you, and certainly this discussion can take place at other times. You are forty-three thousand square feet. You are three thousand square feet more than the minimum size for a double A parcel. The fact that you have insufficient frontage is not gonna hurt you going forward if if there is a a potential change for your parcel. There may be some other questions that come before the planning board with respect to the parcel, but you are, you know, there's nothing wrong with your land.
There's nothing wrong with my land, but um it also, I'm not looking to give anything away or make any changes at this point. I'm just looking at the future of my property.
I understand.
And um like I said, think about it. I was looking in my neighborhood, and there are garages bigger than my house. It wasn't so bad when three twelve was the little little house that was there. We kind of complemented each other. But now I have this two-story or story and a half house, and I'm just kind of like, I feel like I'm an outcast. And um I, you know, it's just so small that I can't see it ever being a forever home for
House next door was built on a, the the house next door that you were referencing to was built on a pre-existing non-conforming parcel.
Yes, it was with a variance. Yes. Yeah.
No, I just don't want you to fret about it.
No, but I just feel like I'm kind of um left out in the cold.
I will say, we do listen and
I know.
I see you coming in and sharing with us.
I just wanted to go on record that that's all I wanted to do, just to make my my thoughts known.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could address that, and I um, you don't mind?
I will. Yes. Um like I said, I'll let you address, but just understand that we are gonna continue this.
Absolutely.
So at the next meeting, we'll be able to go through everything.
That was my understanding before I came in here, but just while it's fresh in our minds. Uh as Marilyn said, and as you know, from your planning experience, prior non-conforming lots uh does not affect your use of the property. Uh you have a bylaw. House burned down, you'd be able to put it back in on the same uh footprint. Um and which, I live in a town, I live in Long Meadow. All of our lots are prior non-conforming. Um so it 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 doesn't affect your, as a real estate attorney, I can say for sure, it doesn't affect your use of the property. Um but that brings you to a larger point. What happens to this lot uh does not necessarily dictate what happens to any other lot. Uh these zone change questions are considered and looking at those solely, you don't have to look at it. You should not look at it in the context of any other lot, um because uh you're just considering that that one lot. It doesn't affect the rights of any other, anybody else. It's uh the use of that lot. And this doesn't change the the rights, the the use um that can be done by right. Uh it doesn't on its own, change anything. Uh there are a lot of uses allowable by right by your zoning bylaws. Um and just changing the zone, I don't believe changes any of those. Um so the, and then the A and R, the approval not required plan, that is just based on frontage. Uh so uh that's where the zone change comes into effect.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? I see now I'm gonna bring it back to the board, and I would make a suggestion that we continue the public hearing until
July eleventh?
So would someone like to make a motion for that?
I move that we continue the public hearing until July
Eleventh.
eleventh at six fifteen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Um what I will say is I will make sure the new member and the members that uh are not here tonight um view this and catch themselves up so that they're able to actually vote and and continue on with it. With that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I have to do roll call on?
Not to continue the public hearing.
Not to continue. Okay. That'll be on the vote.
Yes.
So this is continued. I thank you both for being here. Um I I apologize, um you know, but
As soon as Jake sat down, I knew I, this wasn't gonna go on time.
Thank you both.
But yeah, thank you for your, appreciate your patience on this one.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, orders of the day. Uh licensing matters. Uh there is none. Financial matters. Um fire department, ambulance rate change. So the chief, would you like to step up and give us a quick overview?
Yes.
So you said the rates are going down by forty percent?
I'm sure people would like that. I'm not sure you guys would. Yeah, basically, this is something that happens annually and with Jeannie and with Mary's office. We, I guess, I never realized it. Um it's just something that's supposed to go in front of town council. Um so Mary and I were, we we hashed out some stuff and we put it, we gave it to Jeannie for ten nights. We, I usually do it um for July first. It coincides with our fiscal year. Um and it floats anywhere from two to three percent. This year, it's a three percent. Not gonna cover all the cost increases, uh you know, some of the, you know, between the fuel and the other stuff, but um I I gave you a comparison of rates of other communities in the area. Um what's what's interesting to know is I don't have the rates of the private ambulance services, AMR, Action, uh National. Um but hearing through people that have been transported by them, there's our, in some cases, double our rates. Um so we we try to be comparable. You look at, when you look at the the sheet, the official, the rate change form, um the rates on that is from Comstar, which is our billing company, is the top fifty. That's statewide. That's um when you get out in eastern part of the state, rates tend to go way up. I I guess um I I I would look for your approval to um to make the make the change.
Does anyone have any questions with regards to it? I will say, chief, all I've ever heard is good things about our ambulance service. Um the response times, um the way they treat the the people, just phenomenal. And um it doesn't go unnoticed. We do uh, we do notice it, and we do appreciate.
Thank you. I'll pass that on you.
Is there a motion then?
I move to approve that East Long Meadow Fire Department ambulance rate change as presented to be effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
I second. Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
One last question. Um this may be a more Mary question. Uh who's who signs it? I've always done it in the past. Council president, town manager, fire chief.
We're interchangeable, aren't we, Ralph? Signature lines?
Whoever you can meet up with first.
Me myself in the morning.
Thing is that
I could, I'll I'll send it down. Yeah. Yeah, I'll be around. All right. Thank you.
Whether the town manager signs it or I
Yeah.
Give approval.
I'll get I'll get it down. I'll get it down tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certified motion of the vote for backup or anything, or?
Well, I'm sorry, what?
You need a certified um motion of this vote?
No.
Backup, okay.
Never has.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, financial matters, B two, approval of additional COLA cost of living adjustment.
I move to approve an additional COLA cost of living adjustment, two percent increase for him I move to approve an additional COLA cost of living adjustment, two percent increase for hand and county regional retirees.
I will second that and. Yes.
I need to leave. I'm officially so I'm a retiree and you're voting on a raise for me, so I have to go.
You don't have to leave.
I'll just be quiet.
I didn't say that, but yes.
You sure I don't have to leave?
You do not have to leave. Actually, when we were in Jeannie's training, that is one of the things that they said.
Can they? No, because it's not quorum. Marilyn recuses, do we have no quorum?
Yes, we do. So we have a quorum of the counselors present at the meeting. And it would take three of the four as a majority, because I looked it up, not only through the charter, but through our rules and regulations. So as long as we have three to vote. Motion's made, seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes with one recusal. That motion passes.
Thank you.
And I will send it to you as far as outline and all your council rules and regulations, chapter eight votes. Okay, page two, we're moving right along. ARPA, now we're going to slow down. So let's start with a motion and then I'll ask Kim to do some explanations.
All right. I make a motion to approve previously reported ARPA funded projects as follows. Four hundred eighty five thousand, seven hundred sixty seven dollars and ninety one cents for five eight five five oh four Water Cooley Avenue slash Avery Street. One million, one hundred seventy four thousand, five hundred sixty two dollars and sixty nine cents for five eight five five zero five Water Ridge Road slash East Circle. And three hundred twenty six thousand, six hundred dollars for five eight five five zero six permanent wastewater flow.
Second.
Okay, so under further discussion, if you want to come up, Kim. This is just, we're reconfirming that the council had pretty much already stated that these should be paid out of ARPA funds.
Yes, so it's really just bookkeeping. Most of the ARPA projects were approved as capital projects with the budget. These three projects were kind of outside of that, which I think there was approval, but there wasn't a formal vote. They were then reported to ARPA in these amounts. So I'm trying to just get votes that say this is what we're approving on that. The third one was actually reported much higher because originally the plan was to borrow for it. And we did borrow, so I'm reducing that third project to three hundred and twenty six six because we borrowed five hundred and thirty three thousand in one of the enterprise funds and that actually frees up five hundred and thirty three thousand of ARPA funds that you'll be able to now allocate to something else.
Sounds good. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one passes. So could I have a motion for B three B?
Sure. I move to approve the reallocation of six thousand, five hundred thirty two dollars and twenty seven cents from five eight five five zero four Water Cooley Avenue slash Avery Street to five eight five five one seven DPW truck number seventy three flatbed to fund deficit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. So this is only a partial towards the deficit that we have on truck seventy three.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next financial motion is B three C.
I move to approve the release of five eight five five zero five Water Ridge Road slash East Circle remaining free cash balance of fifty eight thousand, seven hundred twenty seven dollars and forty four cents to unassigned ARPA balance.
I second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. So this is just going back into our unallocated ARPA money.
Yes.
Added to the five hundred thousand.
Yes.
We're doing pretty good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero and D.
I motion to approve the reallocation of twenty three thousand, nine hundred and ninety one dollars and seventy six cents from unassigned ARPA balance to fund deficits as follows. Five eight five five one seven DPW truck number seventy three flatbed. Nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and seventy three cents. Five eight five five one eight truck number sixty seven F five five zero. Twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty three dollars. Five eight five five one nine DPW backhoe number seventeen. Three hundred and fifty dollars. Five eight five five two three MB light to Porter Road parking. Nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and three cents.
I will second that motion. Motion made and seconded, discussion. So the flatbed will be completely covered with these two additional payments to it. Actually, this covers then all of those projects will be fully funded.
Yes, so any deficit that's that was remaining at the point in time should be funded. And then there shouldn't be any deficits that come through without you knowing prior to. So if anybody is, you know, at the point where they will be overspending, we'll be able to take that available balance. And you can, you know, determine if you'd like to cover those.
Perfect. Any questions?
I just say a great job finding all of those. Everything else.
Okay, we've had a motion made, seconded, we've done discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you for clearing all of those up. That's a lot of work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim.
Business. New business, town managers propose reorganization of the Board of Public Works first reading. So I think we should start with town manager explaining the reorganization, then we will do the reading of it. And any background on it? That works for you, Mary.
That's fine. Sure. Thank you. Over the course of the last three years, I've tried to be a very observant of how each department does its business. And this suggestion of a reorg and and a dissolution of the Board of Public Works really is in response to my almost visceral reaction to watching some of the meetings conducted by Bruce Fenny with his Board of Public Works. Now, the members of that board, I think historically, have have supported the department and made some recommendations and and for projects and money spending and whatnot. But when I watch some of these meetings, I see Bruce conducting the meeting. And this is no exaggeration. It, well, it is an exaggeration. It reminds me of like a congressional hearing. All of his mid-level managers are there. They're all ready to answer questions of the board. The water and sewer manager, Daryl Keen is there, Mr. Tadia is there. The buildings manager, Joe Dunn was always there. Now Rob Roy participates. And the functionality of the department, I think, is negatively impacted by all of this time that's spent. If you've, if you had the opportunity to observe Mr. Fenny's superintendency like I have, he puts the nth degree level of of commitment and and effort into everything he does, including these Board of Public Works meetings. They take hours at a time. And effectively, with the change into the charter form of government, the board is really just an advisory board now. They don't set any rates. They make a recommendation that in this last budget cycle, I disregarded their recommendation on water and sewer and stormwater fees. I think now that the director of municipal finance has such a handle on on the those rates that I think they'll be very facile to budget for in the future. And there's recommendations that Kim shared with me yesterday on financial forecasting and policies that are, I think, more appropriately, the function of a of an accountant and our director of finance. So it's a couple of reasons basically, but they're just kind of these very plebeian reasons. I think it's a waste of time. And I mean no disrespect to the board members themselves when I say that. I think it's, I think instead of saying a waste of time, I think that the time of the superintendent and the managers could be better used and more productively used if they didn't have that obligation. Also, it's one of the boards that the charter calls for taping by the services of Mr. Mackey and the Elcat group. And I think that that creates another level of obligation that we could do without. And I don't think the town would suffer at all for it if the board were not meeting with the superintendent. I mean, they are certainly welcome to still make recommendations. And they could come to these meetings. They could come to any of the finance oversight meetings. They could come to any of the capital project meetings that we have manually. Capital advisory meetings, I mean. So I think their function is more or less obsolete under our charter form of government. And although they should be, you know, thanked and and shown some appreciation for the effort that they have put in, I think sometimes as things evolve in this form of government, certain functions are just no longer as vital as they perhaps once were. And I think this is one of them. So that was my rationale. And I think it was supported by the deputy who has some firsthand experience in the department. And so it's really just my reaction with some encouragement from certain council members who think that maybe the board has served its purpose. So that that's kind of the the inspiration for it.
So I will say, I think it was probably your first year here. I recommended that that the board be dissolved. The reason we're sitting here for a reorganization is I thought by reading the charter that the town manager had the authority to just remove the board. And after reading some of the definitions and this and that, we thought this would be the best way to do it. And that way, there there's no doubt on the legality of it. But I do think, I think Bruce spends a lot of time going over all the fees, all the structures and everything, only to have to sit down with the board and relay everything to them. And it just feels as though, to me anyways, viewing it, that there was a lot of added time that could be used elsewhere. So what my thought was is we would do a first reading of the reorganization plan. We would submit it to the bylaw committee for a suggestion and then have further discussion at the next meeting on what our thoughts were. Because I think the best way to do a reorganization is to vote from the council on whether we agree with the reorganization. If we agree with the reorganization, then we vote on the bylaw changes, which is pretty much adjusting where it says, you know, will be submitted to the Board of Public Works. It has to be changed and items like that. Does that make sense to everyone?
Makes sense.
So at this time, is there a counselor that would like to read
Sure.
the reorganization?
Reorganization pursuant to article five of the charter, the town manager seeks to dissolve the Board of Public Works. The purpose of this request and attached bylaw is to streamline the operations of the Department of Public Works. Following the adoption of the charter, the Board of Public Works assumed an advisory role as opposed to any sort of supervisory role. The board no longer has the power and responsibilities it once had. The day-to-day operations of the Department of Public Works are now handled by the superintendent and division managers. And water, sewer and stormwater rates and fees are set by the town council. Under the new form of government, the Board of Public Works function is obsolete. Therefore, the following bylaws need to be amended. The charter should also be modified. Chapter one seventy five Board of Public Works shall be repealed in its entirety. Chapter one eighty five Community Preservation Committee. One eighty five dash one A five, delete. One eighty five dash one B revised to indicate four at-large members. One eighty five dash two, remove the Board of Public Works. Chapter one fifty, multiple member bodies. One fifty dash one, remove Board of Public Works. Chapter one nineteen, Public Works Department. One nineteen dash four, renumber one nineteen dash five. Add new one nineteen dash four. The town council shall set water, sewer and stormwater rates based upon the recommendations of the superintendent of public works and the decision of the town manager. Charter, section five dash four, appointment of board commission and committee members.
Excuse me.
Board of Public Works.
Thank you. So I think the charter language is going to have to be done separately. Because any change in the charter, I believe, has to go to a vote.
Ballot.
A ballot question. But I do believe we can address all the bylaw changes. So with that, I would ask for a motion.
Oh, jeez.
Sorry, it's B one, Matt.
Yeah. I make a motion to refer the town manager's proposed reorganization of the Board of Public Works to the Town Council Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Have a comment?
Yes.
Does the current Board of Public Works know what's happening here tonight?
I have not communicated with them. The superintendent does know what's happening, that this was. So I I suspect he has spoken to them.
Okay, well, that would, that would be obviously my, my, that's my intent. I don't want anyone to be blindsided by this action. I remember when the, when the charter commission was belaboring this particular board. And I wasn't on the charter commission, but you know, you attend the meetings, you 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 see them on Elcat. And I know they had, they struggled, they didn't, as I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, the charter commission did not even want to establish a Board of Public Works. But they made it an advisory because of the nature of the current, the then current Board of Public Works. And respect to the effort that those individuals had put into the process.
I think, as I said, I think Mr. Fenny's probably addressed it, but I will speak with him because I do think that falls to me.
Okay.
I appoint them, so I should be the one to tell them. I don't know already. But I think I was somewhat hesitant because the decision on the on the bylaw recommendation and reorganization itself, it's only a recommendation from our, it's not a, an action that I have any authority over. So it was sort of limbo until it's, yeah, we'll do it as a.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you.
So we've had a motion made, seconded. We haven't voted yet. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will be sending that to the bylaw review committee to look over. Action items. So one of the action items I had put down for our next meeting is typically in July, we look over the council rules and regulations. And that's something I'd like to make sure gets added to the agenda is for the council to look over the council rules and regulations. I think we usually do it in July. And then it's not an action item, but I would like to have a couple of comments. It's at the end of the meeting. I would like to personally thank Michael Kane. I don't know if everyone knows, Michael was one of the original town counselors when the form of government changed. He's been on for seven years. He served three years as the vice president, two years as the president. Seven years is a long commitment to make as a counselor. And amazing things have happened since the council inception. And greatly appreciate everything he's done, all the time he's put in. It's truly, you know, a love that you have to have for the town in order to do it for that length of time. I'd like to thank him personally. And next up, Mary. I'd like to thank you. It has been such a pleasure. I do believe this will be our last public town council hearing, your last town manager report to us.
Yes, sir. You're correct. Yes, sir. You are correct.
I want to thank you personally. Working with you has really opened my eyes to a different way of doing things and a better way, a better way for me and it's helped me personally. And what you've done in my tenure here has been remarkable. And I greatly appreciate everything you've done for the town and for myself and helping me along. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure every, every minute that I've been here. And I appreciate you and all the other counselors with whom I've worked and the other members of the town officialdom. It's really been a privilege to have this seat for as long as I've had it and I've enjoyed it thoroughly. And that's in large measure to all your credit, Jeannie, the bomb clerk. Everyone else that I've come in contact with here, the experience has really been very affirming for me and and I'm grateful. So thank you for your kind words. It's been my pleasure.
Does anyone else have any action items for next meeting?
I just want to say something, if I may.
Please, Marilyn.
Mary, I want to thank you for helping this out because it's made my job easier. But you know how much I appreciate what you've done for us. It's been great. It's been great. And Michael, if you're able to listen to this, I certainly want to thank you for what you've done for the council, all the years you've served. It was Michael, most people don't know this. I was sitting out in the audience, meeting after meeting, raising my hand because I wanted to say something because I was just so engaged in what was being talked about, that Michael called me up one day and said, do you want me to talk to your husband? Because I would love for you to apply for the vacancy on the, on the council. And with not much pushing, that's what happened. So I have to thank Michael for putting me here. Truly, truly. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. Thanks, Mike.
Okay. With that, we have an executive session. I would motion to, I would like to make the following motion, that we move into executive session to conduct contract negotiations for non-union personnel, appointed town manager Tom Christiansen.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. We will go into executive session. And we are only returning to adjourn.
All right.